The situaing meeting will be held Thursday, November 21st, 2024, and we are at the Public Safety Club by St. Michael's. Here we are. We have a post through agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. First agenda item at 6:30 is a full name, Ann Vining, 91 Anne Violet Road, Pleasant Street. Before we begin, I have had a request from our attorney. Can everybody speak loudly? She cannot hear us on the tape. Try to trace right now the digits, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well.
We're not the only four who can't hear. Okay, okay. But I can always address this one. I can always address this one. I can always address this one. I guess it's me. Okay, go ahead. Just go ahead.
Good, thank you. For the record, Gregory Morris registered here, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant, Lennox Realty Trust. This is an A&R application for property of 91 Anne Violet Road. The property's in the R2 zoning district. It's a corner lot at the corner of Anne Violet Road and Pleasant Street, both of which are publicly accepted roadways. The proposal here is to divide the existing property into two lots. Lot one is a fully compliant zoning lot, meaning 100 feet of frontage in 20,089 square feet of public area. Lot two is permitted as a 50-foot retreat lot. It has twice the minimum land area. It has 48,566 total lot area and exceeds 50 feet of frontage. Lot two went to the zoning board. It has issued a zoning special permit as the 50-foot retreat lot. I'm going to turn it over to you. Both lots comply with the requirements.
Okay, Karen.
Both lots comply with zoning, so we do recommend endorsement. Corner lot is not a great lot, but it's out.
It's a little tiny up here, but it's fine.
It meets the requirements.
How does it comply with if it's only 40?
The frontage is on Pleasant Street. The 50-foot frontage lot is on Pleasant Street. They do not have frontage on Anne Violet.
No, they don't.
But it's on Pleasant Street where they have the 50 feet, and they got the relief from the zoning board appeals.
But why did they get the relief of 50 foot frontage when they didn't need it?
Yes, they did.
The 100 feet needs to be measured along one street itself. So we have 63 feet along Pleasant. We do have 40 along Anne Violet, but you're not allowed to add up the two streets.
All right, I got it.
It's just that they don't really have a lot of frontage on that lot because of the way the town land comes into it.
Right, okay.
That's why that's...
Hello?
I know. Thank you.
They needed the 50-foot frontage. Is that even a door?
No.
And remember the weather gets quite a bit though. Okay, just a little switch on that Anne Violet Street between the phone pole and the light around it. Like over there.
Where's the... Not that we've had any discussion with it, I suppose. Where's the driveway going to go, right?
The driveway is going to go off Anne Violet Road.
Would it not be smart to have it go off of Pleasant Street rather than directly across from Carriage House Lane?
So we wanted it almost directly across because it's a wide-open site at that point. You know, if you put it out onto Pleasant Street, you have cars turning the corner where the driveway is. So we felt Pleasant, or we felt Anne Violet was the better driveway location. The address, I believe, will be in Anne Violet.
There's like three houses off Pleasant Street. I should pass through all of your model, not Pleasant, that's it? Okay. Go ahead, Karen. All right, then. Motion?
I do. I think I lost it.
Don't say that. We'll just all get away.
I'll agree that might count. I vote to endorse as a trouble under subdivision control. While not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass., 91 Anne Violet Road and 12 Pleasant Street, accessories parcels 27-5-18F and 25-5-17. Situate, Mass., dated November 4, 2024, by Jason Scott, professional lands surveyor of Morris Engineering, Inc. For applicant Lennox Realty Trust and owners Lennox Realty Trust and James and Ann Vermei. As the division of land is not a subdivision because Lot 1, as shown on the plan, has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the zoning board by law on the public way of Anne Violet Road. While Lot 2 does not have sufficient frontage on Anne Violet Road, Lot 2 will have sufficient frontage on Pleasant Street for so much of the 50-foot frontage. Special permit issued by the zoning board appeals on November 8th, 2024.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Well, that's all. Next up is our applicant. Now, hold on a minute.
All right, we're doing minutes first. Move to approve minutes of 11:14:24.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's your opinion?
Oh, I'll just pay this one.
I will approve the following requisitions for $34.15 to W. Mason for office supplies and $390 to personally approve for a review of bond estimate and Asfield Seaside at Situate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to write a law? Like do you want MBTA communities?
No, we're against.
No?
Not today, should be answered.
There you go.
You know the law was Dexter shot it down.
Yep.
And Kingston accepted it.
Wait, can you say that again?
Kingston shot it down.
No.
No, all the way around. Dexter shot it down.
Shot what?
MBTA communities. So they voted it down.
Yeah. One town.
They got a letter from whomever at 5:15 Monday afternoon of their town meeting to say that the map was wrong. And they couldn't remember the map on the floor of town meeting, and when all was said and done, it summarily went down a feet. Meanwhile, Kingston approved their MBTA community, and it's going to be where the mall is, that whole neck of the woods.
Probably.
Yes. And some woman from Hallowback's was saying, you know, it's fine, well, and good to say that, okay, you're going to get your ransom however much money, but who's going to pay for the infrastructure to support all of this?
Right.
That's a real problem.
Are the state's giving us anybody that?
Are you kidding? Why would they?
Of course.
When pigs fly.
And then we're going to do a zoning for 2025, maybe?
All right, so I just handed out the changes I made this week based on what I thought I understood, the changes that you wanted from last week and the other comments that I have. So I put Steve with the existing accessory dwelling definition, and then I have accessory dwellings shall be classified as described below. Because that's kind of what I thought I heard you say.
Yep.
And so that's what I did there. So the changes on this draft in orange are the changes I made from last week to this week. I took Chris Karsh's comments and put them in, and I tried to incorporate, Steve, what you wanted. In reading this over, I want everybody to read, look at the definition of a large ADU and tell me if that's really what you want.
A large accessory dwelling unit that is a permanent dwelling unit and no larger than 40% of the gross square foot of the primary dwelling and greater than 900 square feet allowed only by special permit.
Is that what you want? Do you want to have a maximum cap on that?
Yes, absolutely.
A maximum cap on?
The what?
A large accessory dwelling.
I mean, not 900 square.
Isn't it the same as what we have? We have a cap now that's 40%.
Right, but so...
What if you...
So what if you have a 4,000 square foot home, and you have 40% of that? That's a pretty large ADU.
You can have that then.
Yeah, you can have that then.
So are you saying that we should limit the size of the ADU?
I'm asking if you want to or if you don't want to. That's your decision, and I'm just pointing it out. Is this what you really mean to say?
I don't want... I... This is what I mean to say. Because that's how I do.
Well...
Again, we've had this discussion.
What is the difference to say?
I like that... I like that we... I like that we have it at 40%. I know there are big houses, but those big houses also usually have a bigger lot. So if you can fit it on your bigger lot, that's okay. If you have a small lot, you're not going to fit it on your small lot, right? Based on setbacks, you're not going to fit it. And there are going to be people that are going to have kids come home with children or whatever, that want a bigger house more than...
I just wanted to make sure.
But that's my feeling.
That's really what you want. Because theoretically, you can put a 4,500 square foot house on a 10,000 square foot lot and cram an accessory dwelling there too. So...
Yes, you could.
Is that what you want?
No, I don't.
That is what is possible today. So the question is, are we changing what's possible today? And I, you know, we set out to do this. We said we shouldn't take away what we've already created by just modifying for what the state has proposed. So you could do that today. And we have people come in, try to build stuff that big, right?
Yeah, we do.
And we said it wasn't clearly subordinate either, right? When we looked at the one on Lot 1.
Yeah, we've had a couple that you have said were not subordinate, and technically you haven't denied any because some people withdrew when they saw the writing on the wall.
But I mean, what would you...
I'm just asking.
I know you're asking. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. If you were to limit it, what would you limit it to?
Can I ask you a question, Karen? How big is the accessory dwelling in El Park? Do we know?
We looked at that yesterday. It's around 15,000 to 17,000 square feet.
It may be subordinate to the main house, but it's still a very big accessory.
It's another house.
Yes, right, but it's 1500 to 1700, the best I can remember.
But it can only still have one bedroom.
No, we don't have a limit. We never had a limit.
They put two. That was based on setbacks, right?
Yeah.
They have... I think that one's a two-bedroom. And I think that one also, you may, you had them put trusses in the attic.
Yep.
So that it could not be expanded.
And this is still over occupied, yes? Is that in here?
No, it can't be. It's a Russian party.
Or can you have that for a special permit? We don't know.
That is a question on our district town council.
Well, it would seem like there's no law that says an accessory dwelling is bigger than 900 square feet. So we're saying between 900 and 40%, we should be able to control that via the current special permit process as well, which would include somebody who owns it and has to live there.
If it's a special permit.
If it's a...
I'm going to verify that. I'm having a conversation with town council this week. I don't know when yet, but I sent him a list of questions. And so now I will add this. I think that we have that as a strikeout in here. And that question, can we limit that on?
So I feel like we can because what the governor has said is that by right, you can do this, and you do not have to own two pieces of property. Excuse me, you do not have to live in the piece of property.
Right.
What we're talking about is a special permit. It doesn't have anything to really do with what the governor said. This is what we have already, as a town, decided to do. And our bylaw, as a town, we added that you had to live, you had to live in one of the pieces of property.
But we could still try to...
I want to keep that.
All right. I will with that.
I don't... So I don't think... I think we're allowed to do that because, again, it's a...
I will verify that. You can have that. As you know, there's a lot of subtleties that we don't know the answers to yet because we don't know when the rights are coming out, and we don't know what the rights are going to say. But we've given it our best guess. And but we have some things that, you know, are cropping up every day now. And so I've asked to speak to town council on it.
That's just my opinion.
That's... No, that's... I mean, because now everyone will be conditioned, whether it's everything going forward will be conditioned in view of no short-term rentals.
Because that's not a law.
Right, but whether it's a special permit or whether it's a site plan, administrative review, accessory dwelling, it will be no short-term rental.
I've wrote this 900 times. If anyone else has a question, you're welcome.
Just look at the definition.
Yeah. Well, you'll have to ask that. And I actually agree with you.
So can an accessory dwelling unit large can be attached or detached?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Right.
So it's a completely different class. The accessory dwelling unit attached or detached are 900 square feet and below.
Correct.
Period.
Yeah, right. And that's... And same with within, too.
And within, yeah.
But when we attended some of the webinars, they said you need to differentiate what the state law requires and other things that you're going to do.
Right. But accessory dwelling large could all, could be attached, detached, or within?
Right, yeah. I also added word in to number 2.
Number what?
Page 5.
Page 5.
Page 5, number 2, by the way. I added a little clarification there. And that I... That's one of the major questions on Asfield or town council lot. There seems to be a common perception among the public that because the governor said you can have ADUs if you have a special permit, you don't have to meet those requirements anymore. And so that is a major question and discussion plenty of having with town council.
Yeah, which we're actively putting our question over.
Because this is what more than one person has reiterated that to me.
Yeah, so these individuals have a special permit issued by the planning board.
Correct.
And we're saying somebody else besides the planning board can undo that.
We're saying I'm...
We're saying the building commissioner can undo that?
I'm saying in consultation with the town planner.
Right, but he can't, yes. So what does that mean? They just tear up the special permit?
No, they... We write some type of decision that says they file for a written conversion. They're going to have to convert it somehow, right?
If they want to.
If they want to do it to a by right process and not have the owner live there.
Yeah.
I mean, so this is...
I feel like that decision should be made by the board, not by the building commissioner. And or, you know, I'm not pointing fingers, not by the town planner either, because the board approved the special permit.
Okay.
The city made the board.
That's absolutely, I get that.
Yes, the building commissioner out of there.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to need somebody to come in that says it falls within, it's less than 900 square feet and...
Well, they would have to come in and file. That is my point. Somebody has to come in and say, I'll convert this, and I would like to look at what the conditions were in the special permit before we effectively tear it up and say, now, these conditions apply. I just don't think that's...
You think that, sure, there are spots normally.
No, I just think it's... It was our authority to grant it a special permit. Then it should be our authority that grants the conversion.
You're right. I agree. It must continue to meet requirements of their special permit, which is as true being.
Yeah, I mean, there could be... It seems to me that could be if people want to convert it, that we would look at the special permit and say, no, we made those conditions because...
Right.
I don't know what they are at this point. There's too many on it there.
Right, right, there's too many.
Right. So we should just make a deliberate decision.
All right.
You know, what we approve, what we would now approve.
All right, well, I will discuss that with town council. I mean, it's kind of... Nobody's really said what the process would be.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to put something in here right now.
No, I completely appreciate that. Completely, Karen, it's not...
But I get what you're saying.
I'm just trying to keep our authority sort of...
Yep, okay.
Line it up.
Yeah.
No problem.
I still have trouble with J.
What is J?
I'm sorry, I...
And as the state law, we can't change that.
So this says accessory dwellings, right? But it's really only those accessory dwellings that apply to attached, detached, or within?
No.
An accessory dwelling large, this doesn't apply?
Right now.
Is what I think what the record said.
Well, I'm just saying...
I mean, I agree with you, right?
But it's all primary dwelling. You don't need to have any of this over occupied at all.
If it's a large one, we are required to...
But it doesn't fall under the state law. It falls under the town.
All right.
Yeah.
Current bylaw.
Yeah. But once we get it to a large, it's a special permit. The state is not covered that, and it'll also give... Strike you on that, I would say.
I still disagree with it.
Well, we all do. But I'm sorry, what's happening there?
So are you saying, Ann, that we should leave it here and let it fly and see what happens?
I'd like to take it out and see what happens.
Take it out?
Take it out. I mean, maybe...
I'm sorry, I meant leave the provision in that has to have an owner occupancy.
Yes.
I would be okay with that. We'll see what the attorney general does.
Sorry, Karen. Do you want to finish that? Because I was going to say something.
I just want to complete the thought. We need to approve something at town meeting. Otherwise, there's no bylaw at all. And then your building commissioners could be making all the decisions.
Oh.
So...
Well, we're not saying that, right?
Well, if town meeting doesn't approve something, then that's what we have to do.
Right, but that could be for 26 different reasons, right? I mean, this is a big thing.
This is a big thing. This is a big thing.
But if you keep understanding that maybe it doesn't pass the legal muster, right? But if you keep the provisions that we already have in the town bylaw to the extent that we can or think we can, then you're changing fewer things at the town meeting.
Agreed. And that's why... But I know... That's why I have Q in here that's strike out that I really want to keep. And that's a discussion with town council. But the way that it's going to be done for town meeting is you're going to replace Section 530.2 with this new section, 530.2.
I get it.
And I'm just going to try to keep as much stuff as that in this proposed bylaw.
So go ahead, Karen.
So what I was going to say... I gotta think it through for a second. I don't know. Do you change because... Okay, I haven't thought this through yet, but I'm just saying anyways. Do we take out accessory dwellings large by special permit? And they're like their own separate bylaw? For instance? You guys like... You didn't really just say that to Karen, did you? I'm sorry, Karen.
I told her not to say it.
Or say something like, which fall under our previous... Because I see what you're saying. People are going to take everything that says in this, right? And they're just going to assume that this new... Everything that's new doesn't necessarily apply to large accessory dwelling because you're coming under a special permit.
Right. But we've made some more requirements that we want even those ones to have.
Okay.
And I think sort of following on that, Q, the one you struck, only applies to accessory dwellings large.
Yes.
Right? Why strike it?
Well, that... Because my first conversation with town council, he kind of suggested that was that it would not fly, but we're going to bring up that conversation again. Well, you know, just because he tells me something once doesn't mean we don't go back and persist and make our point.
I think this is the same point that Rebecca made earlier.
I think it's the same point that Rebecca made, yes.
And that's what makes it a little difficult to follow through here because we use the term accessory dwelling, but we actually have... We've got four definitions with two categories, right?
So what we can tell you is that for every webinar and every meeting we've ever had, one of the biggest pushbacks is on not over occupied. But again, that doesn't mean... That's here, and it might have gone here, but it hasn't gone all the way up here yet. So I think that the OHC has to hear out of how many communities there are that what happened do not like that. They won't chase them until we get a huge number of people complaining about that, which is why I think we should leave it in.
Because then you're... I'd rather undo it.
Well, it's not legal, the attorney general.
Will I undo it? I think, Ann, I think what Karen's afraid of, and I can see this, is that if we take it out and then town meeting goes sour on it, and we don't get anything approved, then we're just stuck with the bylaws.
On the floor.
But what town council advises, keep what you want in here for right now. So we know we have a zoning workshop. We know we're having a zoning public hearing. We can reevaluate after every step, and after the regs come out, too. We can keep reevaluating up and down, even actually up to the floor of town meeting. We can reevaluate as long as we're not adding more. We can't add anything. We can subtract. We can't add.
And town meeting?
Right.
Yeah, you could make a motion to strike Q in town meeting, right?
Right, so...
So if that became the sticking point of getting it passed, So if that became the sticking point of getting it passed, then we should do that, right?
Right.
Rather than have it denied, you know, have it not passed and be stuck with no.
Nothing.
No control, right?
Same thing with J.
Is J in? Yeah, we do have, we do have sort of this discontinuity running through this on definitions of it. Like P says, detached accessory dwelling. Well, that's really an accessory dwelling detached.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it doesn't, that doesn't fall into definition that we have.
Well, I suppose it is. No, it could be accessory dwelling large too.
So any detached accessory dwelling has to be designed to resemble the primary.
Whatever size it is, that's, that's probably right, yeah.
So, I tried to, I mean, a lot, a lot of these requirements, they comply, they're for all of them.
Yeah.
But it has to be, it has to look like the original primary dwelling, that's, that's in the original bylaw. I didn't, I had to, you know, interpret here to make it the best possible that you, that you want.
Well, I would say, you know, if you're, you're going to talk with town council, but my, my vote would be we leave Q in for now.
I would love to leave Q in for now.
George is to strike originally, but we'll see what he comes back and says, maybe he's heard otherwise.
Okay, at, at the end of the day, he's providing advice.
Right, and so, I will.
He's providing.
I will preuse your arguments that if, if a large accessory dwelling has to be by special permit, then we should get to condition what we want for conditions.
That, that's kind of the nature of special permit, yeah.
As long as we have the by right stuff that's in the state law, then we should be good.
Which means J has to stay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Until we hear otherwise.
Until we hear otherwise. But I don't think they're going to take components like that out of the state law.
It's interesting here with S, you know, accessory dwelling unit shall be held in separate ownership from a primary structure or dwelling unit. This.
Which one's that?
S.
In that.
That was like the compost.
Yes.
We don't even know, we can say that legitimately, but we are putting it in there for now because town council says put what you want.
Then why can't we put what we want with over occupied?
Because of the state law, we're going to address the law.
Is there any scut about, around town about that, you know, this could make pretty much every resident in Situate a two-family?
I raised that issue.
But has anybody, have you heard anyone else say it other than us?
I only heard one person say it.
I think that raised that issue in meetings in town hall. Yes, so multiple people are aware of that issue. Select board, several members are aware of the, of the issue.
Has it proven to be the case in communities where they have much more aggressive accessory dwelling approvals? Do you know?
I don't know.
Like Concord, I mean, some, some of those towns, they were already as a right for accessory dwellings, yeah.
Concord? Well, that would be a good question for Concord, I don't know.
I just don't know what the history is of this kind of thing.
I mean, Situate has had a successful bylaws since 1989. There's had some changes periodically along the way, but Situate, from what we can figure out, we've been doing some research, always allowed it to be rental. It didn't have, didn't have to be for family members, et cetera. A lot of communities were just for family members. And Situate, you know, was, was good on, on the rental.
And we have no idea proportionally how we are used by family and how we are used to rental, we don't know that.
No, it, you know, because, a lot of people come in and tell us they might use it for, for a family member.
Yeah, they might.
Well, you know, not to be grim, but then the family member dies or something, and what, you know, they still have an idea when a lot of people are renting them out. I mean, going through the list of short-term rentals that we have in Situate, somebody can use, are being used as short-term rentals. I, I can tell you that for families.
I, I know that, sure.
Current bylaw doesn't say it has to be occupied by a family member.
No, that's not.
Says that's one of the purposes, but it has multiple.
Right, you've been liberal on that, which, you know.
Not only have we been liberal, but the actual bylaw says that, right?
Right, right.
And we all restricted it already.
Which is beneficial if you're, if they're talking about creating housing.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You guys haven't restricted, you haven't restricted.
Not necessarily not for housing, but it's housing.
So, I mean, it's still a work in progress, and I think that, you know, every, every week, we refine it more based on information we learn.
That was a benefit to you, money to the studio practice, which is a good issue.
Well, I run into it, I run into people pulling out their stoles really quickly before the appraiser comes in.
Is that right?
And then looking back in, and after the appraiser leaves what they're selling their house.
Because it's a, a weekly accessory dwelling.
But that's not in Situate, that's in.
Okay, and that's why we put in the definition of cook and kitchen, just to try to eliminate that problem. And let me tell you, it is a huge problem.
But Marshfield also did not have, had very strict.
Yeah, you said that, you had a good deal.
Right, to be a family member. So there's, I think there's one area that there's just a lot of people that raise ranges, if that's what they have.
First, well, second, fourth. Well, that's what they talk about especially when you talk about accessory dwelling, there is raised ranges at foot levels, where you would have multi-generational buildings, living in one house, so.
It's really the biggest sort of change is, there's no owner occupancy.
That's a very strong idea.
That's the biggest change, right?
If this idea was that, that would be the governor, all the letters on that board.
It would be the people, they would be your congressional representatives who created the legislation.
And, you know, we had a discussion with them, they told them flat out, we didn't like that.
And they said?
Well, what, they don't agree with it either, and they're going to bring that back to the governor.
And then our furthest biggest question was to try to get the deadline extended.
Extended, and that didn't happen.
We don't know yet.
We don't know.
So we, we're only with the, what have been last.
Because we don't know when the regs are coming out, they're not telling us when the regs are coming out. How is it fair to all the communities across the whole Commonwealth to have to develop zoning for a spring town meeting?
It is.
They not know what the regs are going to be. I mean, we're trying, they can fly, but we, we don't know the rules yet.
Yeah.
Except what's written in the actual law.
Which was interesting, so when we were having a conversation with the state rep, they said to us very clearly, well, it's in the state law, and we're the only people who read the state law are sitting around this table, and they had to agree that, yes, that was true. And people are not reading that, as do the state backs, they all know it's by right, within certain confines. She never says that. Uh, the governor, sorry, she, not the cat's mother, she, the governor, never says that.
So people don't realize section eight says you can have restrictions.
Yes.
You know, you can have, you can have cycle and review. You have, it's, it's basically block and hide setbacks, you can have all that.
And they did agree with us that that was an oversight on the governor's plan, because she doesn't say that.
Oh, it was? I know what you're saying.
Well, they think it was an oversight, just said, no, I mean, by right, but the imperium said all people here is by right. And that's what his response to me was, well, it says over the laws, people aren't reading that, election, aren't at the state. And he agreed with that, so.
Alright, so, we have developed a PowerPoint for the public workshop. We'll ask the PowerPoint. We try to keep it short and sweet, and we try to identify things that we have to change, things that the existing bylaw allows, and what we have to do for the new, for the new bylaw. So.
You know, we need to trade, get space.
Okay.
Uh, is there something you don't think, thank you?
So I would be interested to know your thoughts on this because I don't imagine we're going to have any time to talk about the bylaw on December 5.
So, I just noticed one thing. On section 533, 530.3 C. Like, this is just, this is just getting the definitional things. We say for accessory dwellings or large accessory dwellings, it's really for accessory dwellings, isn't it? Would be.
Five, where are you, where are you?
Page six.
A six.
C of the.
C.
What do you say to?
Well, it says for accessory dwellings or large by special permit. It's really for accessory dwellings, right? Because it could be.
I had to make sure I clarify a large accessory dwelling limit in that, because.
Well, a large accessory dwelling is an accessory dwelling.
Right, but you still, you still have other accessory dwellings that you're allowing by special permit. We're not taking out, you're still allowing accessory dwellings in the business district, above the business.
Right, and then does that mean? Page six. I just, I just think we're double counting this definition there.
What did you say?
Just for accessory dwellings, because.
It's a large.
An accessory dwelling is one of four different kinds, and we're saying. I think you meant to say for accessory dwellings that are, that are by right, or large accessory dwellings by special permit, right? You're saying the applicant shall provide this. So my definition is just for accessory dwellings?
So it should be, that's supposed to, or it should be in?
No, it just should be for accessory, because the definition of accessory dwelling is one of four things. Just, I mean, you can look at it, I just, it just seems like if we start to do this, we're going to, we could start to create confusion about what applies where. Because if we don't clarify this kind of thing everywhere, then we might.
I think this refers to special permit.
Says for accessory dwellings or large accessory dwellings by special permit.
And so, by special permit, they have to prepare the documentation, and then we have to hold public hearing still within 65 days. Set, number C in 770.2 gives the procedure for site line review for accessory dwelling, which is not a special permit accessory dwelling.
So C just applies large or both, what he's asking about?
Yeah.
That's, that's the confusion, I'm just trying to make sure we have it clear.
How about if it said for accessory dwellings and/or large accessory dwellings by special permit?
What's the by special permit?
Because large accessory dwellings.
Are by special.
Are an accessory dwelling by definition.
But accessory dwellings don't necessarily need a special permit, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you could say for accessory dwellings by special permit. Or requiring special permit.
That required.
And then that would cover.
What I was trying to do, Steve, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay? But I, they made it clear in these seminars that then, go, you know, listening to, if you have a difference, you need to emphasize your difference. And so, that's why they say large accessory dwellings, specify it, specify it everywhere. But I would, I would.
Yeah, I, I just think we're.
Take that under advisement.
We're just getting a circular definition here that I think probably, probably just need to go clean up here.
Yeah, thank you.
It, it could be as simple as for accessory dwellings requiring special permit, right? The applicant shall.
Okay.
So C is just for, Karen, C is just for.
Special permit.
Special permit accessory dwellings.
Right, no, C is for.
Or is it for all of them?
C is for site land review, by right.
Who?
Oh, no, 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 wait, no, wait, no, yes, yes, special permit. I was looking at C in 770.
Okay, so instead of.
Yes, that's for special permits, yes. Because you still have, you have to go by chapter 48.
Okay, so maybe, yeah, so maybe just accessory dwellings requiring a special permit.
Right, right.
That, I, that.
I think that's.
But if we're confused, when are they going to be?
I think you have to put the word required in.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's not an easy topic.
No, it's not. Karen, you know you think you're doing a better.
If you start carving up a definition, it gets really tough, right? Because you have a master definition.
You'll go until you did what to take out.
Steve, another option is to go with the definition, copy verbatim from the law. And that, that doesn't.
I don't want to do that.
That doesn't take care of anything with attached, detached, larger ones.
No, I think it does my job here, I'm just trying to make sure it's, because, you know, what's going to happen, right, is somebody's going to give this to their lawyer.
Yeah.
Right, so we just want to make sure it's, it's consistent throughout, basically.
So they will give you their lawyer, or they're going to charge to our lawyer, has it?
I don't, I didn't, yeah. I didn't find these kinds of statements.
So page four in, in this, thinking here of what we are required.
Okay, can I, can I go, let me go to the.
What is this for?
This is a PowerPoint, yeah, we're proposing.
Oh, okay.
Consider the word ban current owner occupancy requirements.
What page?
Page two.
Page two.
Oh, two. That's strong, how about we remove them? I don't know.
Where are we?
Page two, that's the last two.
Alright. So you want to say, remove.
I like the word ban, what would you like?
I think.
It's a strong word.
It's a strong word, and if we're going to have it for the large ones, I think we're high.
First of all.
Well, this is in a review of the law, right?
Let them figure it out.
This is no review of what the town has.
But who figured it out?
This is the law.
Guys.
Well, this is for the word slot.
Sorry. This is for the.
No, well, banned makes it sound like, so it almost sounds like, well, we have our special, the ones issued by a special permit.
But this is what the formal home access.
But it doesn't say ban, it just took the wording out.
No.
Does it say ban?
Yeah. It's prohibited.
Prohibits, that's the word.
Prohibits.
How about if you use the word prohibited?
Prohibits, yeah.
Use prohibited.
So use just the word prohibited.
Prohibited current owner occupied dwellings, prohibited short-term rentals, sounds better than ban.
About conflicts with Situate's.
That goes without saying.
Okay.
And, and does it ban, it defines short-term.
No, you can't have anything, you should absolutely not allow.
No, no, it defines the term short-term, right?
Yes, and I mean, so including what, so it tells you the size, it tells you subject to additional restrictions that may be imposed by the municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental as defined in section one of chapter 64 G, provided aware that no municipality show unreasonably restricted creation or rental of an accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental.
You could only have short-term rental if you're a seasonal.
But the term short-term rental was defined in that law.
Yes, 31 days.
And town council.
So I think that's what you should, you should just make it clear here.
Town council has just said, don't, don't define short-term rentals. He said, what I.
But it is defined, I thought you just told him it's defined.
As defined in section 164 G, he said, don't, we had originally proposed to put that in here. He said, don't put that in here. His way of dealing with that was to put the time restriction right in the wording.
So now I have the bylaw, now I have bylaw.
Number 10. Number F.
No, I, I just.
One A, number F, accessory dwelling units shall not be used as short-term rentals as defined in MGL sixty-four G, meaning periods of occupancy of thirty-one days or less.
Yeah.
So we say, we say it.
No, I know we say it, and this is a briefing for the board of select, right?
This is a brief, this is what we're using for our, for first the public workshop.
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna be summoned to the board of select, then Patty and I, probably December seventeenth. And so we hopefully use the same presentation.
Right.
So if I may, this slide reflects Mass, Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act. So what I'm hearing is that four.
I think it does, it's just, we're leaving off.
Perhaps what we say is restricts slash prohibits, because that's what's in the law.
Right.
That's the word there, that's what's coming in from the law. We're not going to interpret the law during the workshop.
No.
We're just saying, these are the four things that then anchored discussions within the board of situable.
Well, it seems to me the natural question is, what's a short-term?
And that's gonna come up as we go through the, as we go. So I would just say proceed through the.
But as we say in short-term, that was described in chapter, in there. We're not getting into it any further, they don't want us to get any into it further. Because we have, by putting them not more than thirty, thirty-one days, he thinks we've addressed it.
Okay.
So your C to, so we don't have short-term rentals, just your C.
I have still to change somehow, isn't it?
I don't.
That doesn't make sense, because if you say it as it's defined in the law, well, what does the law say?
And that would come up during the diversion.
No, I'm asking, what does it say?
I just.
She just goes thirty-one days.
Thirty-one days?
Yeah. No, it does not say that law, it just says.
You just said that.
It says, I said, I, the law says it's defined in chapters sixty-one, whatever. I said, we. Number F says accessory dwellings shall not be used as short-term rentals as defined in MGL, meaning periods of occupancy of thirty-one days or less. Basically.
Isn't that in the law?
No, it, it's actually not. It's actually not in sixty, section one, sixty-four G, section one. I looked through that and I could not find where it says less than thirty-one, it's written somewhere else.
You need a part look, because those many times are very confusing.
It's very confusing.
All right, well.
We can fix it each night.
So you're still gonna have to say thirty-one days, or thirty, no, wow.
Well, we, what we're just a guideline for us.
And so what we're trying to build through those, through those slideshows is we're trying to tell you what the Affordable Homes Act says. Then we're trying to say what our, what our bylaw says, and then we're trying to say what we've incorporated in the new bylaw. That's what we're trying to do so that.
I get that, I completely get that. It, it feels to me like it's sort of, uh, government speak.
It is, and it's redundant.
I'm sorry, not very good at government speak.
Any suggestions anybody has on the PowerPoint, just get back to us.
Tell you what, what prohibits, prohibit.
We will, I like the rules. For that, very fine, but that's.
We, we can do that, no problem.
Page three. Also what we have to do. And then unspecified.
Hey, if we find out before then.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm, I'm still on, I'm still on two.
Okay.
Is there, is there a notion now we should say that an accessory dwelling unit is not an accessory dwelling?
Not yet. We have a different slide, that's a different slide, we have a double slide.
Isn't that in the Affordable Homes Act?
Yeah, but it just goes. It does make sense. We can't say everything on the first page.
Well, I'm trying to think of the big things, right?
We'll get to that, that just tells us what that is, okay? So this is what we have to do. Then it tells us what I covered by law, which we all know. And then page five, again, won't be out. And then page six is definitely what I was to cover it.
I mean, I think it's a really good summary. Can you send us this back, the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we can send it out.
So you are presenting this again to the select board?
Yes, it's going, it's going to the zoning workshop first. I don't think, um, we, Jim wants us to go to the select board sometime in December. I requested.
Before the.
The seventeen, because it was after the zoning workshop when we might get some public input. And so. I would use, we would use the same presentation. Or, or tweak it as we need to, as we go along. Last year we found with every chance we knew, we had to tweak it several times. Because we, we want our audience to understand what's going on.
And everybody will, this is gonna be really hard to get through top of here.
Nobody can stand silent, they're gonna sleep.
It's really gonna be hard. It might be a little tougher.
Huh?
It might be a little tougher.
It's gonna be a huge group effort.
And that's why.
I feel like we might all understand that.
And then that's why, and please, we all need to be aware that if certain people do scare up, that the second counter nudges me, we're all gonna scare up.
Right.
For a recall.
Yes, we know who that is.
We don't know that is, so, um, we have asked, we've met with the advisory board, and we've met with the select board, and told them that we need the absolute cooperation on this. They, they, they understand that, they understand what's at stake. So they understand that we don't have that, Mr. Vogel is in charge of all the building in situ, I'll put that in there. Or, or actually, write the forefront. Don't let that go by.
So, back to the beginning. I, I'm gonna say I do, only get to, but I kind of agree with Steve saying on the first page, right away we should say not by the nine hundred thirty or fifty, just. Just.
Like in that second bullet?
Write that second bullet, because we all know that what people are calling, saying.
So we can add that in there, even though we put it later on, we'll, we'll, we'll just put, we'll put, we'll put it on there, right on the second page.
Kind of, yeah, second page.
Just because people think they can do whatever they want.
Right.
So let's make it clear, like, right away, the government said.
Here's the framework of the law, right?
We'll put that there, we can do that, we can do that.
Because you're getting the call, you know people just think they can do whatever they want, and they owe it to you.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you're fielding them, I know you are.
Yeah, I am. A D is gonna be the definite.
Yeah. I thought toll bill was. Well, co, closer to.
Well, second.
You thought what was gonna be, toll bill is toll bill.
The, um.
We collect, we'll go on the board.
On the revision processes, Karen.
Pardon?
On the revision process that we talked about, it says to control mass law, the advisor unit, or. Is it worth saying here that the alternative is there will be no bylaw for anything nine hundred square feet?
We would prefer, like, to bring that up with public?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then.
Because then people will, oh, no, I'm gonna go down.
They like the wild ones.
Yeah, we don't need that.
It almost feels like that then gives people sort of carte blanche to disagree with this for one of many different small reasons and lose sight of the overarching objective, which is to continue to control our zone.
I think.
And you think, if you think there's enough people in town that will just override that, then that's why.
I, I think it has to be stated, get it out, why this whole thing is so important, what it means, and then it will have to be repeated many times through the meeting, suddenly get up and want to do A B and C, and I'll get back and say, you may want to do that, however.
Well, we'll prepare, Steve, but yeah.
Well, we'll prepare, we'll prepare, Steve. I, Steve, why don't we hold off on that thought for the time being? And if it becomes, if it becomes necessary, then, yeah, we might have to put something in there. I mean, we are trying to comply with the state law that goes null fat February second. That's what we're trying to do.
You don't have to convince me.
I know, I know.
So, I, you know, the, the challenge is, um, you have the whole, and I think we've seen it in many, many communities, they all have kind of the home role mindset of, well, that might be what the state's saying, but that's not what we want to do.
And let me tell you, we said that to our commercial people too.
No, I, I'm sure, I, I heard it many times in state government, that's the home role, right? So I, I guess what I was trying to do is find a way to be clear about the consequences of not complying. Right? That, that we're trying to comply with the current law.
Well, we do.
But to the extent that we don't, or we decide to, to buck the system, if you will, right? What are, what are the consequences to the town situated for that?
Well, that will be part of our opening sell-off.
Well, that's why, that's why I was saying.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying.
Yeah, we, so we will crack that if we scare up, as we say, this is what we want to do, and this is why we need to do this.
Well, I think it's not just at town meeting, if we're gonna.
No, but, yeah, well, yeah.
Say it down.
Yeah. So that will be part of our pre-ep.
The sales pitch.
Yeah, the pre-ep.
It's a sales pitch, it's really just stating the reality straight.
Yeah, but the reality is, if you don't attach the bylaw, then we really don't have a bylaw.
That's right.
And we just have this moosy-doosy bylaw, very bottom state, so we need to sell it as, we now, the state came down and said, this is what you need to do, so now we're just getting our bylaws to conform in alignment to what the state wants us to do.
So we still manage our own zone, so I still, I mean, that's really much.
That's really what you want to say.
Yeah.
Got it. So, so we'll, we'll work on the pre-ep that will be available for the workshops, that we will.
And I think that early people will be just happy to study that, right? But hopefully it's not.
We will add something like that, we'll add something like that.
Yeah.
Well, we definitely need to kind of talk it up.
But, but don't be, but there's opportunity to talk it up, I mean, because you have the zoning workshop. We're going to the select board to keep them up to date. Then we have the zoning public hearing. Um, at some point, get called to advisory too, and so it has to, you know, we have to talk up the whole thing along the way. We're, we're allowing for the public hearing on January ninety and a continued public hearing. I mean, and I would probably advise at this time, unless the regs come out before our public hearing, then you continue your public hearing, just in case the regs come out between the public hearing and the continued public hearing date.
My concern is, you're having a public hearing in January, town meeting isn't until April.
I know.
There's a long time in between, we can continue it until late February, early March to keep it back.
Well, I'll have to ask about that, because the process says I'm supposed to have final wording in December. I've already said it, I can't, we cannot meet that, it's physically not possible. And so they understand that, and so, you know, if, if I can keep buying extensions in, I will, okay?
This is so important.
It is, it is.
It's so important, and I'm, this goes back to the fact that we don't have a, a small paper to get the word out.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to inform people, I really don't, because.
People, people who want to be informed will be informed. At some point, we will be putting stuff on the website, but we don't typically put stuff on the website until, well, first of all, when, when we post the legal ad, it'll go on the website, so that's gonna be in December. We will post, you know, we can post on the website if you feel it's necessary for the public workshop.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd post all my planning board meeting stuff on the website.
I understand that, but this is important, this is really, really important.
So we can tell you that, you know, we have the full support of the counter administrator, and we have the full support of the board of select, and the full support of the advisory.
I would question, I would question select board, and I think it's gonna be meetings with individuals, you know.
We've already started that.
Yeah, I, I may have with some, one of the halls.
The two people who really need to go are on board with us.
Yes, exactly.
What is their feeling they've done like this?
Jamie, so one of the, yeah, one of the select board members, uh, was kind of gave a little pushback the other night, um.
But that was not, that was the.
That's a different matter, that's a different matter.
That's a different matter.
That was something to do with sewer fees.
And, but it had nothing to do with.
No, and his, his questioning's, well, all right, yeah.
I, I talked to Karen about that, so, and, and if you notice.
I don't know what you guys are talking about, so.
So there was, there was a, we, we were absent on purpose for the board of select meeting.
Yeah.
They. Oh, sorry, but they were talking about raising the fee for a sewer hookup for accessory dwellings. And one of the board of select did not like a full board to raise it from half to a hundred percent. So we, um, and he was questioning if we could do it in graduate, like, how big the accessory dwelling was, and he was talking, I played, played, okay, I'll see that. The, the, he both was for one, he was not in favor, like, it passed. But that is something different to you, but we do with this.
Okay.
So. Well, like I said, we know that we have the support of the counter administrator, which goes along with it. And he knows that Karen is a struggle witness and won't be ruined by it.
I lost my, my agenda. The next one is. Those is two, Karen, right?
What, what about?
We're gonna get this.
I will send you the latest version in PowerPoint, um, tomorrow, I'll get that out to you. Now, wait a minute, Monday, I'm gonna waste money, because we're gonna do the changes first. We'll do the changes first, then we'll get to versions, um, next week.
So then we have the H O's voice, I did not really think.
And I was unable to get to a fourth person last night, I apologize.
And then we have our plenty of.
All right, so, in relationship to accessory dwellings, I am thinking that you have a planning board fee schedule. Right now, special permits, um, are seven hundred fifty dollars. Site plan administrative review is five hundred. So when we start getting applications in for accessory dwellings by right, they're gonna be five hundred versus seven fifty. I think we need to up it. That's my question, I think we need to up site plan review, a major site plan review, to seven fifty and a thousand.
I agree.
That means it has, we have to hold a public hearing. I don't know whether I'm gonna fit that public hearing in, but we will, I have to advertise and have.
So the special permit would go to a thousand, do you think?
We have special permit in the, um, in the V C M, that's a thousand. Special permit except V C M is seven fifty, it should all be a thousand.
No, that's what I'm asking, you're suggesting that all of it should be a thousand for special permit?
No, I'm saying, well, I wasn't suggesting that, I think the other suggested that.
No, I, I was trying to get, you said seven fifty and a thousand, that's, I was trying to understand.
For major site plan review, I was suggesting that fee go up to a thousand.
Major site plan review.
And that's like the big condos that we.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that's probably. I mean, well, that's probably pretty fair, right?
I would think that should be fair.
A diminished number.
That's cheap.
But that's not speaking to special permits for accessory dwellings.
Well, I'm saying, special, special permit for accessory dwelling would still be seven fifty.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting a site plan administrative review, which ultimately accessory dwellings, some, most accessory dwellings will be higher, should go up to seven fifty to.
Okay, that's, okay. Yes, yes.
So just collapse it to a single fee then?
Oh, no, I'm not saying, just put two fees there.
Yeah, two different. Seven fifty can fight, the one by freight or the, should be less.
I meant a single fee for accessory dwellings, no matter what you do.
It's, it's, it's still the same amount of work.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you at all. But it's, it's a special fee just for accessory dwellings that is different than major site plan review.
No, that's not how I, I was having site, site plan administrative review, do you want, I can put site plan administrator review for accessory dwellings.
Oh, so you were applying to everything?
I, every site plan administrator review.
The whole chunk, yeah, but everything that she does.
Everything go up to seven fifty, and every major site plan review go into a thousand.
Yes, that's not wrong.
But we keep the special permit, and we have other special permits, and we have special permit modifications.
And, do you want to read those?
Yes.
Should those be a thousand?
V C N is a thousand, special permits, and special permit modifications is seven fifty.
How much does it cost to put these ads in a paper? And send out the stuff?
The ads are cost, not a hun, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty dollars. A letter notification, it depends on how many butters.
And space for that, we do or?
We do, by law, on a special permit, we have to send it out. We do not technically have to do certified now, we do certify now. And part is a way to protect us, so when, when they say, I didn't get a notification, well, whose signature is this?
You know, here's the thing, in this day and age, everything is brought up, everything. And I don't see why it's the major, major site plan, whatever, it should be twelve fifty, and everything else a thousand.
Going to the board, yeah.
When was the last time you changed it?
Yes, we changed it in twenty twenty-one.
It's four years ago.
And now went from what, to what did it stand, what was it before?
We hadn't, and we haven't changed it in like twenty years, whereas it did in twenty twenty-one, so.
So we did major adjustments.
We did a major adjustment in twenty twenty-one.
If you're gonna play, you have to pay.
I think it really probably comes back to you, is how much work do you put in for these different kinds of applicants? It seems like a special permit is a lot of work.
A special permit is a lot.
There's a lot of documents that come in.
It, it's a lot of work. But I'm gonna tell you, a major site plan review is the same amount of work.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this special permit maybe needs to be a thousand as well.
I have special permit, a thousand.
Twelve fifty.
Oh, okay, yeah, seven fifty.
It was.
Except for V C N, so all right, so I'll change that to.
Across the board, it's the same amount of work, no matter what district it's in.
So twelve fifty?
That's fine.
And what about site plan administrative review and major site plan review?
Tell you how much work you do, it's a lot of work.
You're probably the better calculator than we are.
Yeah, you're better, but that than me.
I think that probably I'd say site plan administrative review a thousand, and then major site plan will go up to twelve fifty. So I will have to figure out when I can get a legal ad and do this, because we have to have.
Okay, and they can spray them. But it's how to raise their prices, what, what's a precision, right?
All right, so I'm gonna pass out the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. Um, we have a busy schedule. So everybody needs to try to come to all meetings. Water treatment plant, they started, they've had to de-water.
But did you go out today?
I did go out.
Yeah.
And the water de-watering is, is.
Pretty small, right?
Pretty small, I took some pictures.
Probably it's building now.
And, I'll show you the pictures, I'll pass the pictures around. But it's, it's been, it's been a month that they were doing today.
Where were they, de-watering the, the pit or the, the main construction?
The pit.
Yeah, okay.
So I've got, got pictures to show you, it looks very, it looks very good up there.
Good. Only ninety more days to go.
So that, that's where we are.
Is that supposed to come online?
Oh, I don't know, but they said it's eighty to ninety days.
Yeah, horrible, yeah.
I expect we're gonna have at least four new projects and then filed in the next month, so.
Four new big projects? Like, like, what kind of projects?
Attention on the family, you know, the school's supposed to come in soon. Yeah, Tony, I was gonna have a small cell, you know.
I don't, we're supposed to have that tonight.
Right.
Haven't filed yet, so.
Is the school in, like, in January, like, is it coming that soon, or is it?
I've heard they're gonna file sometime, probably early December, I don't know. I mean, so, things are, they're backing up.
Well, considering our last, is it our last meeting, the twelfth?
Yep, yes, yes.
So, I was thinking it's filed December minus a half, much free shot to look at.
No, well, and so I may have to be asking for continuances. Because you guys can only do what you can do.
And you could only do what you do.
And I don't do whatever happens now. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Do you make a motion?
Absolutely.
Sublute?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.